I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's about 11 minutes after seven. Before we start our meeting, I would just like to have a moment of silence for the CBU student that we lost last week, Toni Moran. Thank you. Okay, I don't have any adjustments to the agenda. We do have a person in our audience, actually two. And I'd like to introduce Erin Brady. Erin Brady is running for Jean Jensen's open chair, so we hope she gets elected, but I think she's running unopposed.[47.12][47.12](Laughter) So I don't think that'd be a big deal.
There's still time for me to change my mind and go as right as.[52.01][52.01](Laughter)
I know.[54.01][54.01](Laughter) And Erin will not be with us at the next meeting because she has scheduled a vacation. She had pre-scheduled a vacation. So we're going to put her on every committee possible. So welcome, Erin. And you're -- I forgot your name, I'm sorry.
Jason.
Jason, that's right. Jason is monitoring our --
Budget process.
Yes?
Yeah.
Okay. So, given that, let's go jumping right into 4.0 presentations. The impact of marijuana legalization. And that's Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That would be great. So Adam has to present to you guys about the possible impact of marijuana legalization on high school students or youth. And I immediately went to the Vermont Health Impact Assessment, which I was a part of. I don't know if you guys are aware of it. It's an idiotic document. It is a wonderful, comprehensive document. I was one of maybe 30 stakeholders on this from different points of view, if you will. There were legislators a part of that as well. And it was facilitated by John Searls and Sheila Livingston, Department of Health. And I think this was Dr. Chen really wanting to have an input without necessarily having an input because he worked for the state. And so these are essentially the scope of it. And he asked all these questions about what will be the impact if Vermont taxes, maybe marijuana. And we can talk about this is a very complex issue. Lots of things, lots of things to think about. We can talk about family and health. But for this sake of this discussion, we're going to talk really about the psychosocial outcomes and the academic outcomes, at least unless you guys want to expand it. And I'm happy to talk about this. I could talk a lot about this. But, so Adam, if you can keep going. So here's a very wonderful visual. And this just talks about mental health, the injury, respiratory, physical health, reproductive health, youth, and substance. And this was a very objective. This is out of 180 most current literature that we had. And double bind studies. I'm not the research methods guy, but John Searls is. And someone like for myself saying, why are we doing this? And then you have legalization advocates saying, we should be doing this. He was the objective person. And here's what they came up with. This is a really condensed, as you can see, the impact will get a little bit worse. Keep going, Adam, please. So psychosocial impacts. What we know is that the anxiety, potential anxiety and mental health stuff will increase. We also know, this is an interesting part right here, the brain structure. Right now, there's parts of the brain structure that in studies are finding, like the hippocampus and amygdala that are changing. They don't know if it's permanent. They don't know. They need to get more replication of these studies to actually have any clear understanding of what's going to happen. This is a big one right here. So not completing high school, not enrolling in a clean college, low educational achievement, lower income, unemployment, welfare dependence as an adult, premature workforce, retirement due to disability, and reduction in IQ in middle adulthood. So as you can imagine, this will have an impact on students, not only in high school, but later on as adults and citizens. Keep going, Adam. So more of a easier way to understand this. Keep going. So academics, the cause and effect, this is the big thing right here. So there's enough information out there that this is extremely reliable in terms of literature, that there is a cause and effect between use and outcomes. The more you use, the worse outcomes you're going to get, both academically, but also like in terms of relationships and psychosocial relationships. Here, and I'll talk about Colorado. There's been a sharp increase in suspensions. And I think Adam and I, well, Adam will agree that the biggest thing that we on a day-to-day basis is dealing with individuals who are coming to school under the influence, or if they're not coming to school under the influence of marijuana, they are using it outside, whether or not that evening or the night before, but that's their struggle. And it is pretty clear that that will probably get worse. Go again, Adam. So rates of Vermont is either actually main steady or slightly dipped, as you can see. These are state averages. We haven't had our district, WRBS, 2015 WRBS yet, that hasn't come out. But they use this in the HIA. You can see the steady little drop here, then it's been constant, and then a little bit of a dip here. No one really has seen this. When I get the district report, I will share that as well. Keep going, Adam. So as we can see, here's the cause. So the more you use, the more likely you're going to have in terms of some of the mental health stuff, right? So you can see the indicators here. And then here's the positive things down here. So the less you use, the inverse happens, right? It's a pretty stark. You guys want to spend the time looking at that?
The positive ones are tough, but you agree teachers really care, is that, you know?
Cause and effect. Right. Yep. Yep. Go on. So here's Colorado. As you can see, they actually are number one in all age categories now, across the board in terms of marijuana use. So it's tough when you have a lot of legalization advocates saying, regulation is supposed to work. If regulation is supposed to work, then how come their numbers are not going down, but they're going up? The sad thing is also is that, at least for us, and you guys just listened to opiate addictions, as you can see, that their non-medical use of pain relievers has gone up significantly. They're now the number two in the country. So there is, this was like John Searls, when he got this information, this is from the National Survey of Monitoring for Drug and Health, I believe. He put this in right at the end, this is like November. And he was waiting for this report to come out because this is such a huge report. Sadly, the media has not really done enough on this because this is the data that people have been looking for.
I was going to say, at our legislative breakfast, David Zuckerman said that there hadn't, there wasn't any data that said Colorado was worse.
No, there is David.
It's been that flat out.
This is it. This is it. In fact, Matt Simon, it's interesting because both sides will have to the argument, we'll say, no data, 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 right? So Matt Simon was quoting The Times Argus a while ago, saying, oh, don't worry about data. And this is, so we had six medical organizations, the biggest in our state, come out saying, well, no, 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 slow, slow, slow this down. And then Matt Simon chose to say, no, they're wrong. The doctors, all these doctors are wrong. And he said, well, now the data is going to be valid unless, like, for another five to 10 years. So even following Matt Simon's train of thought, we should be waiting five to 10 years. So I always find that a little interesting. Keep going, Adam. So besides what we know is going to happen in terms of use, we also, I don't think people understand the bigger cultural shift. I think Adam and I were having a conversation about Peyton Manning's comments after he won the Super Bowl. I don't know. So he talked about doing a lot of Budweiser. Right? Did you hear those comments? There's a lot of Budweiser commercials that's happened. So there's going to be a huge cultural shift when, if, and when legalization happens. And so we are already starting to see that slowly creep into our school with a number of clothing brands that are changing. Can you go to the honey one, please?
Can I just jump in there for a second?
Yeah.
So I have a lot of respect for Debbie Haskins. I don't know how many folks know her here, but she used to head SAP across the state.
Yes.
And she sat down with me a year ago and the legalization discussion came up. And she said, I'm hoping as a principal, you'll get on the anti-legalization, you know, bandwagon. And I was hemming and hawing. And she said, just because, you know, from a principal's perspective, taking political stances sometimes can, you know, be a little risky. And she said, well, you don't understand what's going to happen when big business gets a hold of legalized marijuana. And at the time, I wasn't seeing it as much, and this is maybe a year and a half ago. It's, I'm seeing it all over the place now in many, many surprising ways.
So, and I'll go back to the commercialization. Wait, so go back to the hat. So Super Mario Brothers, right? It's a Nintendo game. So there's a huge cultural shift happening right now with the marijuana industry. This is a strain of marijuana. So people, like, there's a student who wore a Super Mario Brothers hat, who I know who may use, and he is saying, I'm supporting, and I smoke this strain. So the marijuana industry is doing a great job of promoting themselves. And they're doing it in a very hidden way, subtle ways, because it's a counterculture. So you have a counterculture that's already there, and then you actually then put it mainstream. It's huge. Go to the honey one. So honey, this is pretty innocuous, right? You guys know what this means?
No.
So there's a big fad.
I'm glad you don't, by the way.[746.62][746.62](Laughter)
So there's a big fad that's happening right now. The flower is really actually outdated. Smoking the flower is smoking the blood. It's more of the THC concentrates, which are dabs or honey oil, butane honey oil. So this refers to dabs or honey oil. We had a gentleman wearing a sweatshirt the other day with this. And so instead of 420, it's 710, so it's oil backwards, right? So this is what's happening across the country and is slowly moving this way. And it is the most popular thing in Colorado. And works in terms of the THC content, it goes from pretty much 30 to 90% in terms of THC concentrates. Those studies, those 180 studies in the HIA, has to do with probably 15% THC levels or lower. We have no idea of what's going to happen when you're using that much stronger potency. So it was interesting to me, when you take the homegrown out of the S241 bill, that says something to me. It says we care more about revenue as opposed to public health. Because if the homegrown comes in and they believe it should be like a social justice piece, then you would think it's going to be, stay in there. But this is, to me, more about a revenue stream for our legislator. And Bo Kilmer from the Rand Corporation testified in front of our legislation. And because we have one legislator who believes that, you know, we can control advertising, and Bo Kilmer from Rand Corporation said, because of how our Supreme Court interprets freedom of speech, you'll never be able to do that. And that comes in with another big commercialization. So big marijuana is, big tobacco will be soon, big marijuana. It's just, it's just the nature of it. So these are little things that's happening, and that's going to be coming here. Even though they say there's no edibles, this is happening in our medical dispensaries. And according to S24, S241, only medical dispensaries will be able to sell these, which is fascinating. Some of our students made their own caramel. Keep going, Adam. This is the dabs. Friday? Friday, we had a young man had a dab kit or had a dab tool on his possession. Thankfully, I had a wonderful conversation a while ago with the administration and caught him up to speed on terms of the trends. And so I think normally, if you would see a dentist-type tool in someone's kit, you'd be like, what is this? But you wouldn't know what it would be used for. Keep going.
What is it used for?
It's for dabs. I never took, oh.
What's a dab?
This is a dab. Okay, so no, do you, do you want me to show you a video?
Apparently, parents are going to have to be educated, too.[935.56][935.56](Laughter)
So what happens, you could do two ways to make butane hash oil, right? So you take, go, can you fast forward? Keep going. Keep going. So these are, keep going back. These are grinders. So you grind, you grind up the marijuana, you grind up this bud, and you grind it up, and you put it into a sleeve, and there's a hole in the bottom. And so you're talking about really the fine kefir or the THC. And you pour liquid butane through it, and then you cook it. Sometimes people add alcohol, and called shatter. And then, so you cook it up, and then you come up with those dabs. It's crazy. There's a lot of explosion happening because butane is very explosive.
So this is a dab, and then you're super.
This is a dab. So it's a little different because in traditional bongs, you know, you take lighter to it. But with this, because it's so concentrate, you need to have a dab nail, so a titanium or aluminum nail, if you will. And you put the dab, so you take a torque, and you heat up the dab nail, and then you put, so with one of these things, you scrape up the dab, and as soon as you touch it, it goes into this, so this is called a dab rig, it just immediately fills with smoke. It's crazy, trust me. I mean, even Tommy Chong said it's like freebasing marijuana.
So you smoke it?
Yeah. Yep.
So did you condescend?
Yes. Yes. And because this, this is interesting. This actually cuts in half.
It's a rubber ball.
It's a ball. It's a rubber ball. It bounces. And it cuts in half, but it's silicone, so your dabs or the concentrates do not get stuck to it. It's a wonderful hidden stash. And I talk about dabs because it's happening, and it's happening more and more with our students, unfortunately. And I see the progression of the mental health piece. An addiction happened a lot sooner when people moved on to dabs. A young man came in front of you guys, maybe two or three years ago, for an expulsion. He had serious addiction. And I will never forget him because he has some serious mental health. The one thing I don't think a lot of general public knows is that the correlation between psychosis and cannabis and possible schizophrenia. This young man had acute psychosis that unfortunately, he continued to use and went from prodormal, so there are different stages of psychosis, that went to schizophrenia. And it's a very sad thing. So in the past three, two years, I've seen three of our students have cannabis-induced psychosis. One went eventually to schizophrenia. So I'm afraid that the increased use, especially with more or higher potency of THC, we're going to see more and more of that. And that's a very scary thing. I think, I think we're about there. Grinders, there's a lot to share.
Tim, how do you just, how do you talk to the other side of the story that we've been offered, which is, at least you know, no one's talking about lead-making of people under 21.
Yep.
We get it the same way they get alcohol today, right?
Right.
But at least it would be controlled, and the kids would know what they were getting.
So regulation is not working with alcohol. We lead the country in underage treatment.
Oh, yeah. I don't think anybody here is going to say that we do a good job at that.
So, so the legalization advocates say, they go after prohibition, which doesn't exist in Vermont, because we have medical marijuana, we have G U Prin. They go after regulation and saying, it will, it will be better control, we can control potency. They actually, the street, the street potency in terms of marijuana use, I believe, is probably around Vermont, probably around 6 to 10%, maybe max rate. Colorado is 17, average.
And numbers in Colorado, underage, when you look at it, increase significantly.
Significantly.
In the 12, under 12, under 18.
I mean, it's a clear, it's, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, just the other piece that I put in there is our 14-year-old to become 16-year-old, to become 21-year-old, to, you know, I mean, when we think about, what does it mean to care for our students? We're caring for a lifespan of a student, I hope.
Yeah.
And I'd hate to see us be creating a new normal. So that's.
Well, that's what I'm afraid of. You know, I think one of our teachers is a fabulous teacher, and he's already seen the cultural shift. I brought one of his students to CenterPoint, and Mike Conover, CenterPoint, said, you know, tell me about your marijuana use. And the kid said, you know, I don't have a problem, and it's going to be legal anyways. So we're already having that shift, the mindset. So this teacher had two, essentially, two groups of kids, and one group clearly used, and they didn't care who knew. And that was a shift back in, you know, back about five years ago, 10 years ago, it was really, people didn't want adults to know. Now they really don't care. But back to your point, so there's a number of points that they're trying to say that it's going to protect kids better. But I disagree. I think increased use, I mean, increased use happens because increased access and availability. So right now, we know that 30%, and this is an average, 30% of our high school kids or Vermont use alcohol. But as we saw, 22% use marijuana. Access, you know, we have legislators saying that, oh, I, they do a litmus test and say, they could probably go to Lucy and say, can you get marijuana easy? Yes, of course you can get marijuana easy. You can get alcohol pretty easy. So throughout the years, the WRBS, you know, since '95, has been saying, how easy can you get certain drugs? And alcohol, year after year, is the easiest. Why is it? Because it's in households. And you're getting it from older siblings or older friends. And so the legalization piece actually creates that new norm, so, you know, myself, or Lucy, or someone can go to an older person and say, can you get this for me?
Lucy wouldn't do that.
No. But, so I actually think the regulation, they don't talk about that much anymore because they don't really have anything to support it. Their big thing is prohibition, 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 and revenue. The preponderance of information of saying, pause, 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 it's like five to 10 years, is like this. And then they have revenue and prohibition over here. I think Joan Lennon, Dr. Madreis, speak. So Dr. Madreis is a Harvard medical person. She's a neuroscientist, and she spoke down a prevention day in January. And very powerful, very powerful in sense that the new epigenetics, have you guys heard about epigenetics? So the research with epigenetics, and granted, this is just with mice, because we can't do that right now with humans, is scary in the sense that we are priming our brains because of the, our brains talk, the endocannabinoids, so endocannabinoids, cannabinoids talk. So they're cross-talking, and we're priming our brains for opiate addiction. In a state that has seen a 770% increase in opiate use and addiction, we have primed our brains. Bob Ditt talked about the last opiate epidemic was in the 80s, right? It actually really started in the mid-'70s and late-'70s, and a lot of epigenetics are saying, because of possible use in terms of the '60s and '70s of marijuana use because of the cross-talk. So Dr. Madreis is really scared for legalization in terms of how that's going to impact other drug use.
So you're saying, so I think what you're saying is that people who start with marijuana, there's actually a physiological predisposition to go to?
Yes. In terms of the neurological, yeah.
That's supposed to just, you know, you now the dealer.
Right. Well, and the regulation phase, they would say, and Shumlin talked about it, he said, you know, if we tax it, if we legalize it, tax it, regulate, we're not going to have Lucy Poppa is going to, or someone else going to, someone who's going to get both. But the reality is, there's always going to be a black market for people underage. There always will be. And the people who are willing to send, to sell to people underage will have access to other things as well. That's just the reality. Any questions? I can keep talking. I'm sent to the SAD council here at CBU.
Did you have a question with your?
Oh, yeah, this is a good one. So this is, I just got sent this.
Hey, that's me.
This was in Times Argus on January 20th. It was fascinating. I, so I testified, I was asked to go testify to the Health and Welfare Committee. And I asked the chair, I said, I hope, I really hope that Vermont's public health is not based on legalization and a revenue stream. And she said the right words to me, at least publicly, about, you know, I want to disabuse you of that notion, Mrs. Triveda. But it's tough to not think the other way. And this is a great, this is a, this is a great.
You can't read it, we can't read the program.
You can't read it?
No.
Oh. So before we take a big step of legalizing pot, we really need to have a hard look at the health implications. And so this is a little sign that says estimated state pot tax receipts. And so it's all, this is all money. So you mean potential budgetary health, question mark? Looks excellent to me.
Shouldn't be laughing.
No. Any questions? So I actually try to stay objective through all this.[1573.75][1573.75](Laughter) I did. I presented, I presented the health impact. But, yes, Joan?
I just want to talk about connecting youth, and we've talked about it financially. But what Bob said and what Tim is talking about is all those conversations that happen in that group. And I can't say enough about our SAD councils and the work that we have to have. We're talking about so much more than educating in the context of math and English. And we're in a different era, I think. And I experience this every day with Department of Corrections and the ramifications. So remember these conversations and connecting youth and all the work that we do in that, in that way.
So I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
One of the other ones that you had up there was traffic and driving.
Yes.
So the CBU's had some issues with their students and driving. So what are the statistics and some of the things around?
So, yeah, the traffic fatalities in Colorado have gone up 32%. Washington, and that's more limited data, that increased almost 50%. It went from, and this is, so again, data, 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 you know, both sides have data. And so Washington Post just came out saying, oh, the known fatalities have happened, no increase. You can't really do it. But Washington State, and I can send you guys all this material, there's a lot, that traffic fatalities in Washington, it was only nine between the ages of 18 and 25 directly for marijuana. They know that because of blood testing. And it went from nine to 17. And that's significant. So traffic fatalities have increased, it appears. What we don't have is the science. We don't have science to do, we don't have a breathalyzer for marijuana. We don't, we have arbitrary numbers of what, a nanogram, that you, nanogram per milliliter is in your system. And we don't have science because alcohol is a water-based soluble, you know, it's broken down, and marijuana is not. It's a fast soluble drug. So it's really tough for science right now to figure out how to determine if someone is under the influence. Well, it's interesting to me because most of us are adults, besides the students here, as healthy adults, we can go have one glass of wine or beer and watch a game or go, and it's actually out of our system in terms of our BAC, within one hour. That's the average. However, there's no, if I went outside and I smoked a joint, or I smoked a bowl, or I took a dab, I, it's in my system for a long period. I'm feeling the effects at least for four to six hours, if not more. And studies have shown, and again, I didn't discuss traffic fatalities, but that, those studies are there, and HIA talks about that. You know, they had pilots, 10 pilots do the simulator, and they smoked marijuana, they did it all in path, they smoked marijuana, nine out of 10 didn't pass the day afterwards. So these are just a number of studies that happened. So that's another issue in terms of traffic safety. How are we going to manage that? The drug recognition experts, that's what, that's Uh, the drug recognition experts, um, that's what, that's what we need to have right now because we don't have a type of breathalyzer. There are very, very few in our state. Um, I believe Commissioner Flynn said that we, he would at least, at least need twenty-five, is that correct, Joan? Um, but as you guys know, that's a lot of money. Drug recog-, that's, that takes a lot of time as opposed to, you know, Lucy doing a sobriety field test and then giving her a, um, a breathalyzer. But that's a four-hour process for a drug recognition, drug recognition expert to go through that. Um, so it's time-laced, a lot of resources.
I don't think it's a lot, and the state has to invest.
Yep.
Um, with a lot of testing equipment because we don't have the capability of that. So that's needing funding if, if that's the direction.
So, I mean, you talked about traffic fatalities, we've lost five, five students in the last six years. Yeah. And, uh, it's tough. All males, all motor vehicles. Yes?
So I have a, I have a question because I, I like to think I'm an optimist, but I gotta tell you, after Act forty-six, I'm not sure I have much faith in our legislative system. So let's say this comes through, this passes, and I, I don't dislike CBU, I think it's a valuable program. I think maybe it's not enough. I think maybe there's a better way that we can be delivering those services. So this passes, marijuana is legal. What do we need at our school? What changes at our school?
Cool, great question.
It's still not legal though, right?
Yes, it is still, it's still not legal for.
I would, I would say you're gonna, you're gonna need, uh,
We're gonna need everything we've been doing.
Social worker, yeah.
We, I mean, we're gonna be needing everything we need by doing nap for alcohol and other drugs. Um, the problem is, is it's compounded because marijuana is so, so sneaky. It's the apathetic drug. It's, you know, um, kids who start smoking, let's say sophomore year, and they, like, once in a while, and then the summer happens and they start smoking more, and then it sneaks up on them. And they, it's the most revered drug, but not understood drug. And so most people who are smoking pot, they don't have a problem with, they think. Um, then the complications, as Adam talks about, the, the social workers. It's, I, I think we just need more resources.
I think you really need education. I mean, I think, I should say that at least half the parents I've talked to don't think it's a big deal, right? And if you don't, your parents don't think it's a big deal.
That's where I was gonna go.
Yeah.
The parent, so, I, I believe, and I think I talked to Adam about this, and sometimes I said to him, I think we, as a school, we battle in terms of morals and, and ethics. Um, and unfortunately, some parents, um, advocate their role. So I, I think the parent education is huge, 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 huge. But even with traffic, traffic safety, uh, the HIA, in terms of literature, said that education alone will not prevent it. So this needs to be a complex attack in terms of how do we educate aware, where. The problem is, the marijuana industry has done such a great job of creating mixed messages for adults and for kids.
Tim, I, the other, the other piece of that, I mean, this is a.
I don't know how to answer that, like, that's a great question, but you know.
Well, as a board, I think that's where, that's what we start, that's what we struggle with, right? What are we gonna have to respond with, right?
This, I mean, and this, I'm about to make a comment that I think is somewhat dicey for me to make because, um, when you say this, you don't want, you don't wanna let anyone off the hook, but, um, there, there, who, who do you think we'll be making money off of? I mean, you wanna talk about some of the socioeconomics behind the use around marijuana? Now, I'm care, I wanna be careful about saying that because I think it pervades, uh, every socioeconomic class, but I'll tell you who's suffering right now. And, and those are the, those are kids in, uh, you know, where, where normal is being defined as being, is smoking daily. And, you know, I have no data around it, but I would suggest that, you wanna talk about a social justice issue? Um, I'm real worried about.
There is data, sixty percent, Jonathan Culkin's talking for Rand, I think I may share this with you guys at the beginning of the school year, sixty percent of marijuana users in Vermont have a high school education or less. So, it, it, it is there, we have that number. And what that impact is, it looks in terms of our special education system. Terms of our healthcare. There's a, there's a huge burden based on that alone. But you're right, in terms of the board, how, how are we gonna do this? First is that I'm gonna keep fighting that it's not gonna happen. At least, you know, we need more information. We need ten years out, then we can have this conversation at the State House. Let's do a better job with alcohol and regulating and underage drinking. Let's figure out how we're gonna deal with our opiates. You know, my, my thing is now, I say, so, if you think regulation's gonna work so well, how come we're not legalizing heroin? Right? It's a scary thing, it's a scary thing to think about. If regulation is supposed to work really well, if we're supposed to protect our kids, why not legalize heroin? Everyone would be like, "Oh, my God!" So.
Tim, to, just to play off a question, so, you know, we're all sitting here like, what do these hats and shirts mean? Do you think the parents understand?
No, no clue.
So I know, you know, you're not supposed to wear, you know, like, a hat that says, you know, Marlboro, or, you know, anything tobacco or alcohol-related, right? Not supposed to wear at school, is that the same policy for this?
Yeah.
And if you see it, what happens?
It gets confiscated. So my job is administrators, current.
Right.
I mean.
Tim, we don't want Tim doing any of that stuff.
So we had a meeting, I said, "Here's current trends, like, get on board." And I'm probably like two steps behind, which really was happening.
Right, but if the parents don't understand that.
Well, it goes back to Tim saying, "Parents, some of you already have an issue."
Or either bugwires.
But there are two groups, I mean, at least the easiest part would be the educated parents who do have, do care and want to do everything they can to keep it from happening. Then, then you have some other problem. And I think it's, I, I think why I think it's a little different than heroin is I think heroin's even bad for grownups. But this is like, this is one of those really tricky things for kids where it's not like smoking tobacco where you can clearly say it's bad for everybody to smoke tobacco. But now it's like, more like alcohol where you're saying, "Well, you're just too young." It's okay when you're older, you're just too young. And teenagers don't wanna hear that.
Yep.
But I do.
It's actually bad for adults. And, and the correlation between cardiovascular disease and marijuana is starting to be staggering and very, very much like tobacco. Uh, and that is, we're getting more and more information about that. Marijuana could be even more dangerous than tobacco after we find out. Because it has its, we have a psychological cognitive we know about.
Right.
Right? And then now you compound possible physi-, physical stuff? So it's pretty scary. If we had this opportunity right now with marijuana, if we had this opportunity like we have with tobacco and alcohol, would those two drugs be legal?
Well, we tried it with alcohol.
And it worked. Prohibition actually worked. It cuts serosis down, it cut use down, almost in half. It failed as a po-, as a political policy.
Yeah.
But it actually worked in terms of use and disease and.
All right.
How about one more question, Jean?
Flip side?
Yes, sir.
How much money are they gonna raise up? I haven't heard.
So, think about it as a column. So they think they're gonna get all this money into this column, but then it comes out. We know just from one mental health disorder, schizophrenia, that it will cost taxpayers about four-point-nine to eleven million dollars a year just from schizophrenia, the increase in schizophrenia. So, we know that for every dollar, with every, I don't have, with every dollar that we get in terms of tax revenue, so with every dollar in terms of tax revenue with alcohol, right? There's a side of it costs of ten dollars. So let me, I'm not a mad guy. Let's say it's just a straight push, let's just one-to-one. So with every revenue we gain from, we actually lose that. So we're really not getting any, any revenue. And the only people who are getting money is the corporations. So, there's this idea of revenue, but to me, no pun intended, it's a pipe dream. So they think they're gonna get a lot of money, but then the taxpayers will do the burden. So, any other questions?
I, I don't know if you happen to watch Bill Maher on HBO, but his last show Friday night, he's a big pot advocate, and he lit up a joint on, on television. And he was smoking it on tele-, I, I was just floored because what kind of social message does that send?
There it is. And it's still legal federally. This is a cash economy.
Right.
So we have the bankers against it, we have the business people against it, we have the medical community against it, we have mental health and substance against it. It, it's, it's crazy that we're going fast forward right now. We have education, VPA just came out. So, it's, it's interesting how we keep moving fast forward because we see dollar signs, but we have most of our community saying, "Hold on, pause, pause, pause." So.
Just wanna say a quick shout-out to Tim because, uh, I'll tell you, not having an SAP the last couple of years in my prior year to coming back and being able to work with Tim again. And I think the term SAP is, it's not entirely accurate because just in terms of a person who sees the whole child and, and upholds kind of the values of our community and, and just works tirelessly to, to support our kids, just a huge, huge fan of Tim and his work, and so thankful to have him. I think during the budget process, I said, uh, that's the one thing I can fight tooth and, tooth and claw over, so. Really, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Tim, you have to come and educate the parents now.
I would love to. If you can help me try to figure out how the best method? Because the people who show up are not the people who I should be talking to.
Yeah.
And it's, it's unfortunately, it's always poorly attended. But I, yes, I'm game. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Tim.
So, so Paul, off of that, so do we wanna take an action to discuss this more, given the fast path in the legislature? I'm gonna circle back to what you guys, your discussion in the CSSU board.
Well, that's what the, the board would like to do, but what the CSSU board talked about was adopting the Vermont Superintendent's Association, um, which did not come out against legalization. It came, it was strongly worded against legalization, then it said, "If you choose to, if you choose to legalize, this is what you need to do." Or, uh, so that, that was sort of where we're going, and that the board may, I think it'll be an action item for them for next month.
Right.
Frankly, we didn't have this passionate a, a speaker.
Or the statistics.
Yeah, the statistics are different than what I've heard before, which is really something that's important, so.
Well, maybe he should come to the CSSU meeting next month if it's gonna be on.
Yeah, yeah, or at least, I was at least gonna tell them they ought to go to RETN and listen to it because it's, you know, it's, it's compelling.
It is.
So, I don't know, this board could, is, did the VPA come out against it, do you know?
I don't think so.
Uh, hey, Tim?
Yeah.
The VPA just came out against, right?
I can send you.
Did the VPA just come out against?
Uh, I can send you a paper. I do, I, yes, but I don't know.
Well, anyways, that's what I would, I would, I would probably recommend is that you have a couple of, maybe, different options and you discuss and decide if you want to support either one. And, um, last we heard is that it, speakers like Tim have slowed down things a little bit since maybe a couple of weeks ago, so, um, maybe there's more people in the legislature who's thinking maybe we need to think about it for another year. Um, but no guarantees, so. So you can put it on your gen, I guess?
Yeah, I have it, I have a motion, I think.
Yeah, because I mean, you know, watching the CSSU board, there are a lot of people who said we wanna line up and that the School Board Association represents all the boards and we should understand and comprehend their position and how strong it is. And then there was another portion of the board who said outright, "Our job is to protect our children and to educate our children, and this is, you know, not in the best interests and not in that path." And I think that the CSSU board was kinda split from looking at the, you know, numbers aligned there.
When is crossover?
The Friday after we get back.
From town meeting?
So the eleventh.
I'm just wondering if it makes sense.
I'm sorry, Lynn, what did you ask?
I just asked when crossover was, if it made sense to wait and see what came out of the Senate before we took up the discussion of it.
Joan, when are they actually gonna vote on this, or it's still in discussion?
It's in appropriations in the Senate, and that's the last committee it has to go to. So if it comes out of appropriations, it'll go to the Senate floor, and it will be debated there. And there's thirty members. Um, and I, I don't, I, I imagine the Senate is gonna be a yes vote. It won't be, it won't be, um, I don't think it'll be a landslide, but I think it'll be a yes vote. And then it comes to the House, and House Judiciary Committee has to take it up, Ways and Means and Appropriations. Crossover is the eleventh, and so it has to come by then. And I don't have a sense that the House is ready for it. And that's what I keep talking about, that's why I brought Tim and Margo to the State House, that's why I'm, I'm always in conversation with folks. I, I have taken the early stand and said that I don't, I'm, 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 no piece of legislation in my ten years have I said I had an opinion made up beforehand. And on this one, I did. I'm that long of a supporter in, in youth and brain development, and, and there's a lot of reasons to regulate and understand the, the chemical content of it. And, and I just said, I, I, I won't do it, I won't go down that road. So that's how, bringing folks in, making the phone calls, we've got, in the whole nation, we've got the most senators in our district, we've got six senators. You know, some of them chair committees that has already voted a yes at a committee. But, you know, you can talk about what we've heard tonight. My day on the Corrections Committee is hearing from the big, Bob Bicks of the world from eight-thirty till five-thirty. And the ramifications in all parts of our society. So I, I've never, I've never been outspoken like this in, in ten years on, on something. Some of it's emotional, I understand addiction. Um, but, but most of it is for the, the benefit of, of youth and all people that I will advocate against this.
So it sounds like if you took it up at the next meeting, it would be timely. It would be after crossover, so you would know what you're actually advocating for or against. Um, but you really need to be prepared at that meeting.
Or you could wait till April. I mean, the legislature's still in session, you know what the House is looking at doing.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that they're gonna move quickly if they see a revenue stream and not think about it. It's just part of, do we as a board want to put a position out there?
It's not just a revenue stream, I mean, that's a piece of it, but people believe it is not as harmful. We're not gonna affect brain development because it's twenty-one and older, um, and that, so, so it's not just.
But the human brain doesn't stop developing until twenty-five.
So maybe we should put this on as a discussion in March.
And the problem in March is that, in the March, you have, remember, you have the March board meeting, it's first, so it's a short meeting.
No, yeah. And it's, we'll spend more time reorganizing the board at that time.
Right.
If people are really passionate about it, we can have that discussion in March about this. But, um, just be prepared to have only this discussion.
Yeah, I would like to put it on that we either resolve as a board to put a statement out there that we're against this, or that we line up with the Vermont.
VSA.
Board, whatever, understand their position and decide what to do or not do.
Adam, can, can you ask Tim to send individual people here, they're board members, but as individuals, you know, a, a piece, a, a short piece, to then, as individuals, pass on between now and whenever we have a discussion, and then you do with it as you will. You know, there, I'm not imposing you to do something, I'm just saying, if someone chooses, that I, I think that. that's effective. And he has, you know, the bullet points and things that would be effective.
They're, the data in that PowerPoint would probably be.
It's got to be short. Everybody gets inundated with information. And you can say you're a school board member, but as a community member.
Send your own email, but just let them know your position.
I guess I'm having.
It said, send, send an email to your legislatures.
Yes, yeah. Your senators especially. There's only six of them for right now.
For here.
The VPA did issue a statement that Tim shared with me about four points they wanted the General Assembly to look at.
And maybe your Chittenden South reps.
Yep.
You've got your, sure, all the towns. There's six of us. And then six senators.
I can get that. I'm sure Tim would be happy to do that.
Okay, can we move on to reports to the board? And we'll start with Adam's report.
Did you have copies of this? I didn't have it in my packet.
I had.
So probably focus first on looking at modifying the school schedule. Take a straw poll of faculty. Two weeks ago, and I think 90% of people on faculty were in favor of changing our school schedule slightly for next year. So the idea would be that we would, now we have a, we have a rotating A/B schedule. So Monday red, Tuesday white, Wednesday, and then the next week it flips. So what we'd be looking at doing is having a Monday red day, Tuesday white day, Wednesday would be what we call flex day, and then Thursday would be a red day, Friday would be a white day. So at least four days of the week, you could count on those days being fixed and able to connect with the world at large for internships, apprenticeships, college courses, those types of things. The other benefit of that, I've been talking with South Burlington, MMU, and Burlington High School, and they are intrigued, I think particularly South Burlington, in having a similar fixed day so that we could have students go amongst all the schools and set up a cooperative agreement. So you could take classes, you know, if we offer a particular class, students could come here. And it would be just a wonderful benefit to our students. Not to mention, we were also looking at the, at the idea of the delayed start around professional development. And you'll be hearing more about that from CSSU, the CSSU board. So that's, that's out there. And the other potential schedule change is really looking at beefing up advisory and another thing called FaceTime where you, in the middle of the day, could meet with students in a more flexible way than we've been able to the last 20 or so years. So that's out there.
Is that scheduled to be this upcoming year?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I've taught in several schedules over the last three or four years. And it's amazing how fast you adjust. It really, moving on what this, this proposal's a very minor tweak in comparison to what hopefully is coming down the line in two years. But we'll see.
You won't have to say red week, white week.
Right. Well, you, you still might because the Wednesday will tweak, so.
Oh, yeah.
But at least four days of the week, you know, you'll know what's happening. So you'll see the, the new elective courses beneath this. I don't know if there's discussion.
Can I make a comment on that?
Sure.
I didn't see any math or science, art science, geography kind of maybe.
The, you know what's interesting? What's not here is probably the most significant change, and that is looking at the year two science that's been proposed. It started about three years ago to get the next gen science standards throughout, throughout the first two years of a student's experience here. So I don't know if that was, if the board looked at that possibly last year.
If this is the one we talked about, this is, this is where those of us who've been around for a while get head spin. So a couple of years ago, we used to do, you would have two semesters, you'd have four science courses over two years. But there, so you would take chemistry for one semester, and then you'd take the second semester of chemistry two years later. And we said, well, that doesn't work. We need full year. You have the same teacher. You really concentrate on it. And so we changed to that. And now I think we're talking about changing back.
No, no, we're moving to, it's a full year model. So you wouldn't.
I thought we were in a full year model.
We are in the ninth grade year, but not the 10th grade year. So the 10th grade year right now is still what typically is three courses that students are taking. So this would move to an in-depth relationship with one teacher over the course of a year. But what you'd be doing is you'd be looking at, you'd be looking at a variety of subjects within that one year and focusing primarily on kind of going for a depth of skills and learning as proposed by the next gen folks.
Is there any on that integrated science?
Yes.
I, if I was going to be on the board after tonight, I'd probably want to hear more about that. Because I, I do think we.
Well, I do remember hearing about it at the retreat last year.
Yeah, the retreat.
And it was very fuzzy. Very fuzzy.
Yeah. It's been, as far as my, I understand, it's basically been in the works for three years. I think primarily coming from the push towards science standards from, from Central Office and a group of teachers working on it. I mean, it certainly has been a hot topic. You know, I think anytime there's, there's change like that, you get.
What teachers have been working on?
The entire science department.
So then the kids wouldn't be required to take the, right now they're required to take like human bio or natural resources.
Right. So the idea would be that you'd get through these two years of science and then, you know, you'd be able, you'd be through your prerequisites.
Got it.
Yeah, with maybe the exception of like something you might need for, for an AP course. But, but, you know, you'd be proficient so you could go into any of the courses that you wanted to.
So I guess my question was, why aren't there more math and sciences as electives? Why is it such a communities-based elective in matter?
Yeah, some of it's just the, the organic way that course development happens here. So I think typically what happens is that as opposed to a comprehensive review of the courses, someone will get inspired with something or notice something about the curriculum. And so one year you may have a variety of science and math courses, and one year maybe more humanities focused. And I think that just happens to be more of a humanities focused.
So do you feel it's balanced?
Overall, as a school?
Yeah. Of course, we bring that back as another topic.
Yeah, I would bring that back. We've got, I mean, you've heard me talk, you heard me talk about it through the budget process. I think we've got some very interesting plans for intensifying STEM here in some, in some meaningful ways. And I'll tell you that right now, we're waiting to hear back. I was supposed to hear yesterday, but we've got 168, $3,000 out in bids for grants to do just what we're talking about in developing sustainability in a STEM center. So we've gotten, one grant already came to fruition from the Farm Schools Grant, and then these other ones are kind of excitingly, excitedly waiting on. So that would be, that would be a huge help.
So could we maybe put that on the April agenda since March will be short.
Or I think probably you should put it on the retreat because you don't want to mess up the work plan.
I'd put it on the, it's, it'd be tough to think, talk about in 15 or 20 minutes. I'd say retreat would be a really good spot for that.
Okay.
I just had two comments on a less controversial one first, which is adding to AP courses. There was an argument, there is an argument for not having too many AP courses because the more APs that school offers, the more the kids are expected to have taken, which puts an awful lot of pressure on some kids. So we were always pretty hesitant to add too many APs just for that reason. So, you know, if people, kids want these and want to sign up, but I would be hesitant on, to go wild with AP courses just for that reason.
Yeah, I think there are a lot of reasons to be hesitant around AP courses.
Yeah, yeah. The other one is probably, I don't want this to come out wrong. Love the idea of voices of women in literature. I would just be cautious that this doesn't become too political because you can certainly have a, let's say, globalist feminist. I'm a feminist, right? I mean, I believe in feminism, but I think.
Whoever was a feminist, that doesn't qualify in terms of being powerful.
But, you know, especially when you get into marriage, sexuality, empowerment, equality. This is a high school, and I would just be, I've read the books that are on the list most, over three of the four, and I think they're fine. But I could see that becoming uncomfortable for some families to have to come to you and tell you that that's not appropriate. Brainwashing for their daughter. So it's just, just a caution when I read that. Are we dropping any courses?
Courses tend to, so remember that many of our courses fill based on student requests. So you have a variety of courses that, that won't run. So it's typically not intentional processes, unless it's been several years. And we say, we're not even putting this in the course catalog. Once they exist, they hang around for a while.
Any more comments on the principal's report?
Yeah.
Nope. Okay, the CSSU debrief, 5.2.
Wait, I think I said yes on the principal's report. Yes, yes, two things. One is Jean.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm leaving because you're here happy.
She told me I can't, she told me I can't thank her until the next meeting.
That's right.
I wonder if you planned it that way.
I did. Because I could be embarrassed brutally for two, two meetings in a row.
But thank you.
Thank you, then.
Yes, thanks, Jean, for all your hard work. But we'll have something for you next time.
Well, I did just, I mean, really, the only, only thing I would say for this board is it's, well, it's a fabulous school. I was walking through the building today, getting all teary about the fact that I probably won't be in the building very much anymore. And it's sad. It's a great school. I absolutely am thrilled that you're here, Adam. I think it's in, it's in very good hands. And board's nice and strong and able to deal with all this. And it's exciting. I would just say that for everybody, just by parting words of wisdom, it's, there's so much on this board's plate. And it's like you, you see it, and then a month later, you see something completely different, and a month later, you see something. We're sitting here trying to, looking at the agenda going, why did we put this on the work plan? I don't even remember. Because there's just so much change. And what I've found is it really helps if, if people individually just find what their passion is on the board and just try to look at things with, through that, through that eye. You know, you don't want to become a one subject person, you know, one issue person. But, you know, you really care about our low SES kids, or you really care about the fact that the teachers are supported and fabulous, or something just like that. Or you really care about the financials. That's always been my thing, right? So, you know, just find something and, and make sure that doesn't get lost. Because otherwise, it's just a, once a month, you come in here and you talk about great things, and then you go away, and you come back the next month and do it again. At the end of the year, what did you accomplish? You know, how did you move education forwards? Just my words of parting wisdom.
And a great metaphor for school in general for how we want our students to be.
Oh, there you go. Find your passion and look, use that lens. Good idea.
And then the second topic is safety.
Was, I thought safety was on later in the agenda.
It is on the agenda.
Because it's in the principal's report too. So.
Five, five.
It's down 5.5.
Yeah, okay, we'll go there.
Okay, back to the CSSU debrief. Jean, would you like to address that since you're the chair of it?
Because I was there.
Since you were there.
And I was there too.
Technically the chair.
I was really, the only thing that really impressed me about the Colt report was, sorry, is how much devotion to the report was like to the legislate, what's happening in the legislature. That really.
Awful lot going on there. No, I don't think, I mean, otherwise, most, I'm always noticing now how much quicker it is to read both sets of information because they're so similar. Like CSSU pre-reads and the CV pre-reads, everything's on both. So most of that, and you were there for, you know, Bob Bick was a fabulous speaker. So that was probably the biggest things we talked about.
Yeah, Bob was wonderful. Does anyone have any more comments on the CSSU report?
I just want to echo your comment with the legislation around school discipline. So I think it'll be interesting to watch that as it moves forward, materially in hand with the marijuana discussion as well with the statistics that we saw.
There were two acronyms here that I was mystified by. One was LEAD.
Lead? That was, that's the leadership team at Central Office, including the principals.
Across the district.
Lead is the principal.
Okay, and then there's PD on that same page.
Professional development.
I'm sorry, what?
Professional development.
Thank you.
Get those, Aaron?
I got a sheet.
I was surprised at the special ed identification rate, national versus Vermont. Was there any discussion about that?
Yeah, actually, we did speak about it for a bit.
Why the, why the difference? Was there?
What Megan said, and somebody help me if I got this wrong, but her, what she said is the data is that in Vermont, we tend to identify kids with emotional issues more. There was not just emotional, it was something else, but emotional kind of.
Behavioral.
Behavioral, emotional, thank you.
Yeah. And instead of most, a lot of states kind of look at when a child fails, then they will step in. We're not waiting for that child to fail. We're trying to catch them before they fail.
Well, that's our, that's our response to intervention stuff. But I think the definitions of, of special ed are fairly rig, rigid. I don't, so, but I think that, I think, that's what she said, was that these behavioral, emotional things were more. And the other thing is that, thanks for bringing it up, Jean, because the other thing to keep in mind with that FICUS report is that they're comparing the entire state of Vermont to other places. And a lot of the situations, if you compared CSSU, were not quite as, as out of bounds. I don't think our costs are as high as the state average. And I don't, I think she said that we identify about 12% of our students at CSSU as well. So there could be at some point, a lot of information or a lot of press about the FICUS report as it kind of gets, as people have time to read the 150 pages. But it's really, it's really valuable. I think it'll be fabulously interesting to see what the legislature does with it, this adequacy model. But, but it doesn't necessarily translate to, the state of Vermont does not necessarily translate directly to what we do in CSSU.
FICUS, is that another acronym I don't know?
That's the company, that's the adequacy report.
We're going to get a lot of those this year.
Any more comments on the CSSU report, the Colt report? Okay, 5.3, the second quarter FMR.
My last FMR. My real last.
Yeah, it's your last one.
More than happy to report that we have.
We're favorable.
Surplus. Surplus of $150,000, which is about $100,000 better than last quarter because of tuition revenues. The only thing that's not in there is, if I got this straight, because it seemed like it was in there and not in there. But I think right now, there's a special ed.
Special ed, yeah. There's the special ed. Evidently, there have been some special ed students that have moved into the district. And we don't know, I don't personally don't know what school they moved into. That, it's kind of confidential. But these are high need kids, and they are going to cost a little bit more money because they weren't planned in the budget when it was made the previous year.
I think there's also a couple of kids who have slid into that from.
Right.
Being able to be held, managed in the school to not. So costs are up. We're in a situation now where, you know, the costs are spread across everybody, which is, makes it painful, a little bit painful for everybody instead of devastating for a couple of schools. Just the other important thing, look at the, we're not, we're not running a surplus in the food service.
Yeah.
And, you know, at the end of the year, that money has to come out of the general fund. So.
Can we budget for that?
No.
No.
Because.
That was something we talked about, I know, a lot at the elementary school. And I think we finally ended up caving in and putting it in there because every year we had to re-overs and dig them out. And so maybe it's something to think about.
This is, this is new just in the last couple of years. They always, Leo always used to run in the black a lot. We used to talk about how to, how to get rid of money.
How to share the money.
Share the money. We were trying to get it, yeah. Yeah, I think last, I think two years ago, we were like $20,000 in the red. And then last year, it was, I think it was okay, or it wasn't very bad. I'm sure, no, it might here. And then this year, it's bad again. But it's, I have to say, Leo's, it's like the second quarter FMR is always the worst. And Leo figures out what to do, and he's, he pulls some money back. Well, that's what I remember Cindy, I looked at you. I remember last year, we got saved the last minute for some glitch in how we paid folks, or we were reserving vacation money or something. There was something, something that was, that turned out to be not so bad. So. And finally, on the back, well, back page, the capital funds. So this here says, you see this over in the bottom right-hand corner, the 67, 742? That's what we'd have left at the end of the year after.
left at the end of the year after finishing all these other projects. It also assumes that we spend the 150 for the athletic fields, so.
And just to let people know that the ba- the bids for the athletic fields, they're going out, if they have not gone out, they should go out now. This is just the repair on the one field, the irrigation. And I also think that he put out the bonds for the paving. He put it out two ways. One is if we do get the bond passed, one of the bids out is to redo the entire thing.
Parking lots.
Parking lots, I'm sorry. And then if the bond doesn't pass for the paving and the lights and so forth, then...
It's just this 80,000.
Yeah, he would only do a small repair on the parking lots, if I'm not mistaken.
And just, this is just like the holding the keys to the kingdom, but if you notice on your, the consent agenda, there was the impact fees thing. So, I'm going to tell Jeff this so he can remember, because just bug Bob about this. I love doing this. But if we get more in impact fees than is budgeted, the overflow goes to the construction fund. So there's like $45,000 more than what you see on here because of the impact fees, so. Keep building in Williston, Shelburne.
Okay, so that was the second quarter FMR. Hey Lucy, you're up. Student council debrief, 5.4.
Okay, so this week we have spirit week, which is going pretty well, except for, well, today was supposed to be chocolate Tuesday.
Oh.
It's not so... But the day off, I think, was actually kind of nice for all involved, although I'm not sure where that leaves us at the end of the year. Yes? Spirit week, we had play on Monday, which was very exciting. And tomorrow we have holiday Wednesday, Thursday's decade day, and Friday is class color day with winter carnival in the afternoon. So this is just a very exciting week for student council, especially to see all of the school getting really involved in spirit, which is always really exciting to see. People enjoying themselves at CVU. In terms of sports, we have some championships coming up. I know that there's Alpine and Nordic states after break. Wrestling is entering championships. And then boys and girls basketball and boys hockey, those have yet to start playoffs and everything. So it's a very exciting time. It's ending the winter season and soon it's entering spring season. We have state debate championships on March 12th and we have five debate teams going. We also had forensic state championships and our teams did very well, I believe second overall. We had first place in a number of events, which was very exciting for those students. We also have the play coming up. Those are student-directed one acts in March as well, March 12th, which is that weekend. And so those students are all very excited. We have four students, two juniors and two seniors who are actually directing these one acts. So it's very, it's a very exciting time overall.
Lots going on.
And then recently we had the Penguin Plunge and we had 168 students plunging and raising close to, well, raising about $48,000. So that was a huge triumph for the CVU community to give back to our greater community.
Which I'm not happy about, by the way.
I know, don't you have to do something?
I have a mohawk coming my way.
I thought I read that.
It's actually my wife who's less happy.
When is that happening? I just, I have a lot for you.
Friday, like 2 o'clock, I say, yep, it's going to be a red mohawk. I don't know.
And that's it, we're gearing up for break and then closing out, it's closing out the school year pretty soon.
Thank you, Lucy. Okay, who is going to speak about the safety committee recommendations? 5.5.
We talked about...
So you'll see, I actually snuck these into the principal's report as well. So I would say it's been, it's just a thanks to Kathy for making our early morning meetings. It's been a huge benefit to the, to the safety committee and a real voice of reason, but also you've pushed us in some nice ways too, to get, make some action. So the, the safety committee was unanimous, particularly after looking at the feedback from the external community and internal community, that we'd like to take the step of installing security cameras on the external doors and parking lots surrounding the school. In addition, to save potential cost, at the same time putting in the hardware to allow for the potential of a buzz-in system, but that, thinking that we're not quite ready for that yet. And again, the idea behind the cameras would be not, not necessarily monitored all the time, but useful if something happens. For instance, when the catalytic converters were being stolen out of the parking lots a couple of years ago, using, using these cameras as a tool. In addition, we're also looking at making sure that all of the doors, external doors have the magnetic locks. We have one or two that, that still don't. So that would be, we're looking at taking action on that shortly. That's, I don't necessarily think that's a board item, but just, just FYI. So, but you know, if people have strong feelings about the, about cameras and probably the board wants to have some discussion around that.
So be any pushback in the school community?
Yeah, you get a little bit of pushback. I mean, by and large, people, I mean, I think people will be going to recognize that cameras are everywhere. You know, you walk down the hall and, you know, every, every person's got a camera in their pocket filming constantly. You know, personally, I've, I've shifted on this a little bit. I think a few years ago I shared more, you know, I can sort of see Joan's face a little bit like, oh, really? You know, and I went to a school that had cameras and I didn't really notice the difference. It was a, you know, a school that liked CVU. It has a lot of nice trust with students. But I'll tell you that three or four things did happen over that time period where it was, it was nice to have some, some, some video where you could sit down and say, well, actually, let's talk, you know, it's hard to deny this when you're seeing this, let's, and it becomes a way that you can, can talk about something. It's not unlike when you have to conduct a student search and, and because you have evidence of something, you and the parents and the student can actually have a, a discussion in a, in a different way. So I think it would be important that the, the safety committee is also really clear that before these went up, we want to be really clear with students that this isn't about, this is more about concerns around external things happening as opposed to what's happening internally in the school, that this doesn't mean we don't trust students. But you know, if you can talk to the Heinsberg police about some of the things they've been dealing with, particularly as we're, we're talking about opiate use and, and that epidemic, if you will, a lot of, a lot of, a lot more crime than there used to be. So, you know, it can make sense.
I guess one of my questions about this is how, well, you won't be using these as Big Brother is watching.
No, no.
But what if you do catch something on a camera that is questionable? Like, what if you found someone lighting up a joint in the parking lot?
You deal with it.
Okay.
But we, I mean, I think there's a, I don't know that anyone's got the person power to sit and have someone watching a camera all the time.
And is it loop or something where you can like save it and it saves like the hour prior to when you...
No, it's, I mean, it's on, it go, I don't exactly know, but there's a, you know, there's a server that you can access that has the data. I'm sure it's wiped out after some time. I'm not sure what the period would be. And we'd have to put it out to bid and, and see what made the most sense in terms of where the cameras go.
They talked about what some of the other schools are doing at the elementary and middle school level where they do have them. Most of them back up to a server for an X amount of days and then they, then it's just written over.
And these are external only?
Right.
Yes, yeah.
Something you might want to consider is have, is writing a policy about them?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's interesting because we, at the same time, educationally, we're also saying it's really important. We want to get our, you know, we hear, talk about the sustainability center that we're trying to build here. I want there to be a lot of traffic out of the building to, to the outdoor area. I want kids getting out for internships. You know, it, it's, it's an interesting thing. So I'm, we're trying, going to try to couch all of that with, this isn't intended to be a locked-door facility where we're making promises we can't keep in terms of safety. But there are some things you can do just to be thoughtful and, and...
I think what was important was what the Heinsberg police did bring to the discussion. And they just said, and they counseled us on being naive.
Yeah, we got a little bit of that.
And not being so naive about what is really going on in the community. And they, they gave us a, what their job was a year ago versus what their job looks like today. And it is significantly changed. And he said that, you know, if you look, particularly in Heinsberg, in the parking lots, a lot of issues that are increasing.
The town of Heinsberg?
Yep. So he, you know, he counseled that, you know, while there's also, you know, personal safety for the community, there's also property safety. So you want to make sure, you know, that you are thinking that way as well.
Thank you for being on that committee, Kathy. And thank you for the... Is this the final report from this committee?
Yeah, I mean, unless you want us to, to do something else, I mean, I think it's, I don't know how, how exactly if you want us to go ahead or if you want to take action on it.
Well, is this what the safety committee's decided? Is there recommendations for national?
Maybe that's, the update on how it's being perceived and, and something like that. I don't want unintended consequences because of, of cameras. I mean, our, our best asset is our, is our staff and, and people walking around knowing our community. And, and I'm moving a little bit. I mean, it's...
Shows on your face.
I, it's, I, I get it. I mean, it's, it's one that you have to communicate a lot around. I, I, the last thing I want is students to feel like we're saying we don't trust them because that is the heart of CVU.
That'll sabotage, that'll backfire.
I actually would think the buzzer system would be easier, more easily accepted because most of the kids at this point have gone through all the elementary schools where it's all buzzer system. The cameras, they're not so used to, right? Because they aren't at the elementary schools.
We had that discussion, which is why the buzzers, the wiring don't go in for that. So that was also a discussion around what are, what is the standard in CSSU for that, you know, type of procedure. So that's something that we want to talk about a little bit more.
Okay.
But it's only at the door.
Can we move on to, are there any other committee reports? Okay, let's go on to discussion matters, 6.1, policy. We have two policies to look at, bus discipline, which I found fascinating, and also transportation. Does anyone have any comments on those two that can go back to the policy committee before we vote on these next time to ratify?
On bus discipline, immediate removal. Is that en route? Can that be en route to a destination?
You saw all the caveats, right?
Yeah. If it's a safe place.
Yeah, I know it won't happen, but they can't?
Theoretically, yes.
Get a face safe parking lot and...
Doesn't put the child in danger, I guess.
I've never seen that happen without someone calling. It'd be scary.
Any other comments on bus discipline or transportation?
My, my only comment on the transportation piece is, transportation is an SU board issue, right? So it says in, at the bottom, the superintendent shall submit to the school board for any approval. I mean, wouldn't it just be better to say CSSU?
Cindy?
She said yes.
Okay.
Well, Ray will be there too. But yeah, I got the note.
It's actually an interesting question. Does this policy need to be approved by the local boards?
I can, I can...
Because this board wouldn't approve special education policies anymore.
Well, your, your consent agenda does have restrictive behavior interventions. Some might argue that's a special ed function, but I can research it or we can wait and see what happens in May.
There you go. It doesn't hurt to have it over, over applied, I guess.
We won't keep saying, well, if. Here's the answer this way, here's the answer that way.
Okay, thank you for everyone's feedback. 6.2, budget information meeting prep. Why is it on there?
Well, are you going to present in Williston? Great. Do you have the PowerPoint?
I don't have, that's why I'm saying, why is this on here? Because I don't have the power, is the PowerPoint not even made yet, I don't think.
No, so I guess it's just a matter of discussion around who's...
Who does the CVU meeting here?
Uh, we do the CVU meeting here generally when...
The day before.
Yeah, well, yeah, but when, generally, I, I would, since I was doing it in Williston anyway, I'd have the presentation if anybody wanted to see it. But I think in the last 15 years, we've done it maybe twice. So it's here if we have an audience. Usually if there's an audience, we just answer questions or, or bring something up. But, but, so Williston, we have, we join the school board at their annual meet, the local school board at their annual meeting and present our CVU slides. What do you guys do in other towns? Wilson's over here. Well, I know that Heinsburg, Heinsburg said, don't bother showing it to us because if we want to see it, we'll come over and see it at the CVU meeting.
I gotta yell at it.
Right. I mean, it totally makes sense, right? I mean, if they wanted to see it, they could just come half an hour early and see it because their, their meeting is here right after our, our meeting.
And doesn't Laura usually do it in her town?
She does, with the CCS. Who puts the PowerPoint out?
Bob puts it together, yeah. And what do we do in Shelburne? Yeah, so...
We did, there's a preliminary one that we went instead of the, we aren't ready. Because we were approving the budget the next week.
That's right.
And then...
So we just sat there and supported Dave Connor.
Okay, so I, I usually, I mean, Bob would normally have it by now, but you know, I know, I'll, I'll look it over to make sure the numbers match what we put in the flyer mostly. And then it'll go out to everybody and...
Yep.
Okay. I mean, Bob's open, you don't have to pitch exactly what Bob shows if you don't want to, but it's less work if it does.
Yeah, makes it easier.
And the only other thing just on, everyone should know on town meeting is that the ACT 46 study committee is going to have basically a frequently asked questions, you know, some notifications about meetings that they're going to have, public communication meetings. You may get asked questions. You'll have the same flyer, everyone else does, so.
So when are those meetings? Those are on the 29th?
Yes.
Yes, well, I'll go through the...
The calendar.
The calendar of the... Okay, can we move on to our action matters? Action 7.1, to schedule a retreat date. Do I have a motion to schedule the recommended date of May 26, which is a Thursday, as our retreat date? Okay. Do we need to have a discussion on this? It is a Thursday, not a Friday, which is, begins like the holiday weekend, as Joan pointed out, which is great. And our retreat usually happens in the morning and then the CSSU happens in the afternoon. And Sandy will email everyone as to when and where this will be.
If you can all man, if you could at all manage to stick around for the CSSU one, more and more of our responsibility is moving to central office and it's usually a pretty meaty discussion.
Okay, and in the packet, I did not see any international...
Did we, did we vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor of moving the recommendation, recommended date of May 26, say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it? I do not have any information about international trips. Do you have something for that?
I do.
Excellent. Okay, do I have a motion to approve whatever Adam's going to talk about on international trips?
Wow. I think I'm going to word that a little differently in a minute.
Okay.
So who did that?
I did, and I don't know.
Does, did I have a second on that? I'll second it. Okay. Get my name in the minutes from that. Okay.
I'm saying you're approving the administration's recommendation.
Thank you.
I'm sure I'm handing out the right stuff here. Oh, boy. It's going to get complicated.
So what is the, just, because I haven't done approval of international trips, I mean, the trips are scheduled, what does the approval mean?
They're for the next year.
For next year?
Yeah, not for this year.
Is it a sanction that these are in school or...
Typically, Gene's biggest concern are costs and where we're going, and the educational value.
Mine, too. You say we have some very expensive trips for us to do.
But we're sending kids overseas under school sanctions, and so, that's why it's a board responsibility to approve them. They said they want to send, you know, a group to Syria. You may want to think twice. You know, there's a hundred reasons. And, you know, they are taking often several, four or five days off from school on the ends, depending on when they can schedule things, so it's just good to have an eye on them. I think they're mostly ones we've had before, Adam, this year.
Yeah, with the exception of one, which I think, I think the one, except for...
I'm surprised we didn't get four.
Did you get the whole package, Joan? Then we couldn't screw it up.
Thanks for clearing.
One more over here. Never mind. I didn't count.
Staple malfunction.
I didn't see Kim behind Lynn.
Another issue, Kathy, that we always struggle with travel is the, you know, the kids that are going, you know, who can afford this?
I appreciate that.
Yeah, and just...
The equality.
Equality and affordability.
Thank you.
So, the Galapagos trip, I think, was one that was talked about extensively last year and was, what's that?
Came down to a very tight vote.
Came down to a tight vote and was postponed until this upcoming year. So, that's one trip that's going out there. That's, again, I'm just the new guy.
So, it's postponed?
Yeah, that's what I understood. Galapagos was approved last year for February 2016 and postponed until February 2017.
How come?
Don't know, wasn't here.
Williston, Georgia.
That's not on here, right?
That's not on here, no. This is a different trip. So, the other, the Galapagos trip was, the cost of that trip was $4,200, and I think that was probably some of the discussion that went around the board.
Right.
The England-Ireland-Wales Open Trip is proposed as well for next year, and that's a $3,300 price tag. And then, the final trip is the one, this is the new one that you're holding, and this is through our International Business Course, and having a trip to Haiti, and this is $1,800, and much more affordable. So, the other two you're familiar with?
I've worked with these guys who are in Haiti, and they've stated our passport for it. They actually have our Land Cruiser.
Oh, cool. Hopefully, hopefully, you gave it to them.
We did.
All right.
So, so, first of all, just, the England-Ireland-Wales one started up at some point because we realized that the kids who were getting the opportunities to travel were the kids who were French five or, and that there was, there was a group, there was a group of, yeah, there was a group of kids not being necessarily given the opportunity, given the courses that they were taking, the course curriculum they were taking. And this one was really, I could be paraphrasing, a good way to get kids who may not otherwise have an opportunity to travel overseas, an opportunity to travel overseas.
I think the goal was first-time traveler was the...
Right.
Is there a trip to Italy as well?
Yes.
That's going this year.
That's going this year.
That's this year.
Totally every other year.
France and Italy this year.
So, the Galapagos one, we don't have to approve because it's already approved, though I'd really like, I'd really like to vote on it again. And the, so, we're approving the England-Ireland-Wales one.
Yeah, and then, and then this course to Haiti.
Is there a trip to the Dominican, too?
Pardon me?
This year?
Yes, there's a trip this year to the Dominican.
So, it's not next year, but not next year?
No.
Okay.
Is the International Business Class, is that, is it offered both semesters, or is it just?
I think it's an extension of the business class itself, so it's like an extended learning opportunity.
But, so, anyone who's ever taken that class could go on? It says the trip is open to students in the International Business Class. Is that just that one class next spring that's taking it, or is it anyone who's taken?
My understanding was it was open to all the business courses, but I'd need to check into that to be sure. Again, I think it kind of, it goes back to that, I think the board is being clear about making sure trips are much more accessible and open, so...
Are any, if you can't fill the class with your International Business students, will it be opened up to other groups, perhaps French-speaking students or...
It's an interesting idea.
Any concern with the Zika virus with this trip, with this area?
Hope they don't get pregnant.
Right, I think, I think there's probably concern everywhere, unfortunately, but I think it's primarily around pregnancies where the concern is.
What is the crime level in Haiti?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. I'm not sure if it's...
I mean, because they were, are they still reeling from that earthquake from a few years ago?
No, the earthquake is not an issue.
It is?
It's not.
It's not?
No, it might be cholera?
I mean, we would pay attention, as we would in any trip, to what the State Department is saying. You know, just like the trip to Washington DC this year after the Paris attacks, I mean, there was quite a bit of work to be done around that, so... And I don't want to jinx anything, but I always feel like kids are safer on trips in some ways, because typically, they're not driving, they're, you know, they're with a chaperone, knock on a lot of wood, of course, but...
Also, if they're going out to where I think they might be going, it's out in the boonies, so it's a lot safer out there. Kind of near the cities.
Paige has a table on it, says the space allows students from most business classes may be invited to travel as well, however, a trip is primarily designed for study, students studying international business.
And are there any scholarships with this one for...
Yeah. Quick aside, this week, the Fairbanks Core Team took trips to Burlington High School and Winuski High School to meet with new Americans as they studied the Odyssey. It was, I went to the Winuski one, it was so powerful to see these, our kids interacting with students from Nepal, Bhutan, Somalia, and all of the students Winuski brought in food that was native to the culture from which they were coming, and it was, and to see them interacting with students who were 24, who had been through the process and were just getting educated because they were, they were in camps for so long, it was, the kids had such a powerful experience and...
This was my dream, because a few years ago, when I, when we talk about all these trips, I say, "How about driving to Burlington or Winuski?" They're amazing communities, and they're so different from what most of our kids would necessarily experience as part of their everyday life, whereas, you know, kids in Burlington, that's what they see every day, going to the building, it's unbelievable to be there.
And the extent of how welcoming our kids were, I was talking with, you know, and again, I'll just, total aside, but the, just the current political climate in our country around refugees and, you know, Sean McVannan, the superintendent, some of the difficulty they've had, but to see our kids step up and be ambassadors, it was cool.
That's great. Do more of them.
This trip made me think of that a little bit.
Does anyone have any more questions on the Haiti trip for Adam? So, my understanding, we have to approve both trips?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second.
Yep. So, do I have a...
Can we vote?
Yep, a motion to approve the...
You've already got a motion. You've already got the motion.
Well, we have the motion, because we're going to do them both at, well, we'll do them both at once.
Okay.
Okay. So, do I, we're going to do a vote for the Ireland-Ireland-Wales trip as well as the Haiti trip? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The ayes have it, you have your trips.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we are on to the consent agenda.
Look, you're exactly on time.
Hmm?
You're exactly on time.
Wow.
Don't jinx her.
Can't discuss the consent agenda, we're good.
Because I threatened being a time thief.
So, we're going to approve the entire consent agenda in one fell soup, because there is no discussion on this. So, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
The who?
Second?
Second.
Somebody?
Everybody.
Okay, although, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye?
Aye.
The ayes, anyone opposed? The ayes have it, consent agenda is approved. Okay, our next board meetings are the February 29th Annual Meeting, that is at 5:00 PM, and is in a room, it's in a different room, and that's where we have any concerned citizens about our budget, come to that meeting. My understanding is Tony Lamb has already been asked to moderate that meeting, so he'll be there. So, please remember to be there.
And 10 minutes later, we adjourn.
And then, 10 minutes later, we adjourn, and then, we all head off to our town meetings. And then, our next board meeting, for those of us who are returning and coming back or being re-elected, please note that the March 15th meeting is not at 7:00, it is at 5:30, because we have to reorganize our board, and then, the reorganized board goes off and goes off to the CSSU Board, which then, they get reorganized. And that starts at 7:00, for those of you who are interested in attending that one.
And just to side on that, is that I'll be leaving a position open on the CSSU Board, so we need another CSSU Board rep.
We'll vote Aaron on that board.
It comes right along with the territory. Besides, besides, you'll need someone for, to be the vice chair.
Yep. So, with that, confirming the, those dates, are we having an executive session?
Yes.
Okay.
Relatively short.
Okay.
Superintendent evaluation.
So, I'll adjourn the meeting, and do I have a motion? We're going to move to another room, so we're not near the mics, but do I have a motion to go into executive session? Second? Okay.